Good evening Wakefield and welcome to the October 25th, 2021 Town Council Meeting. I call this meeting to order and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have all six members in attendance in studio today. Before we begin, I wanted to have a moment of silence. Wakefield lost a very valued firefighter this weekend after a long bout with cancer. He was a 16-year veteran of the Wakefield Fire Department Lieutenant Robert Ford. He leaves behind his wife Michelle and his three children, Robert, Caroline, and Michael, and many, many colleagues and friends and family here in Wakefield. If we could just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Item number four, Public Engagement. Sherry, do we have any?
Yeah, hi Julie, we do. We have Bronwyn Delagoldi on.
Okay.
She should be coming over, yeah.
Okay.
Bronwyn, we're just gonna need your address also.
8 Cyrus Street.
Thank you so much Bronwyn.
Go ahead.
You're all set.
Thank you. I read a little bit about the fleet policy that the council will be discussing tonight and I noticed that 85% of the vehicles listed will be exempt from this. I know moving forward as they get more fuel-efficient vehicles that that number will hopefully go down, but I just did wanna say that of the 116 vehicles listed, that only 17 were not exempt. So I think we can do better. But one other thing that would save the town literally thousands of dollars, thousands, which has been proven in many other communities, is if the town vehicles would comply with the mass anti-idling law, you would see a huge reduction in your fuel costs. Some vehicles, of course, have to stay running to operate machinery and that's included in the anti-idling law, but that was just one thing to mention that if you use that across the board, you'd save a lot of money. The other thing I wanted to discuss was having to sign in, the town moving away from Zoom meetings to Zoom webinars. Now people have to sign in with an email address and that is, the first time I had to do it, I knew immediately that this was not a good thing, that this added requirement would discourage some people from participating. And I did reach out to town leadership and the reply I got informed me that the town is moving away from the Zoom meeting platform to a Zoom webinar platform in order to prevent what was called, something I'd never heard of before, is Zoom bombing, which is when a meeting participant speaks out of turn. Now, most of you know that I attend a lot, a lot of meetings, a lot of town meetings, and I really do not recall Zoom bombing happening maybe once. And it was a quick moment, nothing that disrupted the meeting. Zoom meeting hosts as well as webinar hosts have control of the meeting. There's a function to mute and unmute participants. So the vast majority of participants, as you know, are civil and we all follow the rules. So there doesn't seem to be a need to move away from the Zoom meeting platform. I feel very strongly that this is a move away from transparency that some in-town leadership have been working towards. I think that this discourages participation. It makes it harder for some people to participate. And some people are concerned about what's done with their email address, who has access to it, why is it needed? And so I wanted this board to think very, very clearly and carefully about staying with the Zoom meeting platform so that participation is easier, and maybe not easier for leadership, although I don't see a Zoom bombing problem myself. But I just think that this is something that needs to be addressed. And also, if you could address it at a future Town Council meeting, that would be great. And I also wanted to know if Town Council and committee and board chairs were consulted prior to making this decision, because I think it has an impact on public participation. Thanks so much.
Thank you Bronwyn, all good points. Anyone else, Sherry?
Nope, that seems to be it.
All right. So we will discuss some of those at future meetings. Great, approval of the minutes, approval of the October 14th, 2021 Town Council Meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second, moved by Councillor Buck, seconded by Councillor Santos. I guess we don't need to do a roll call vote, do we? So all in favor? All right, opposed? So approve 6 to 0. We have a number of project updates tonight, beginning with Vision 2030, which I know many of us participated in and I personally am excited to hear the outcome. We have Carlos, sorry, don't have your last name here, Mendez?
Montañez.
Montañez, joining us from MIPC. And Jonathan, I know you've been very involved as well, so if you would like to give an overview or an introduction, please do.
No, just happy to kick it off really briefly, but I'll let Carlos, you know, go through the content. You know, I just want to start first by saying thank you to everyone in town who participated in this effort. You know, as Carlos will go through, I mean, we've had over a thousand sort of individual touchpoints with the process from residents, either through participation in the surveys, you know, participation in the virtual public forums, and through that process really gathered, I mean, literally mountains of data from residents. And residents representing sort of all walks of life in Wakefield, from, you know, a group of youth who came to the first forum and talked about the need for sidewalk improvements in town, to folks that have lived here all of their lives, seniors, you know, people representing, again, different demographics, different age groups, and so forth. Before Carlos gets into this, I do wanna just recognize the work that Carlos and his colleague Christian Brand did on pulling all the work together. I mean, it literally was a Herculean effort to take the mountains of data that we collected and boil that into something pithy. And, you know, I think as you'll see as we go through, we have something pithy, but then also a lot of background detail that'll be available for the town. I also do really wanna call out, before we go through this, Erin Kokinda and Jen McDonald from the Town Administration. You know, this required a huge amount of effort on their part as well and, you know, I always knew we had a lot of talent in town and, you know, working with them closely on this effort really reinforced how lucky we are to have just the skillset that both of them bring. So thank you to them. And finally, thank you just for everyone who participated in the advisory group and in the forums from various town boards and commissions. You know, their input as well is really critical. So with that, Carlos, I'll let you get to it.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm gonna attempt to share my screen here with the PowerPoint slides.
I believe we have them up.
Oh, okay, excellent. All right, thank you.
Yeah, WCAT is managing them, so you can just tell him, them, when you wanna switch one.
Excellent, okay. So thank you for that. This is just the opening cover slide for the final plan, draft plan presentation. So if you could just advance it to the next slide, please. All right, good evening, everyone. Council Chair, Town Councillors, and any Planning Board members who may be virtually attending. I wanna thank you for this opportunity to present the final draft of the Wakefield Vision 2030 Project. This brief presentation will cover the purpose of Vision 2030, the community process and input. We'll have some brief highlights of the vision statement, goals, and also some recommended strategies. In late 2020, the town contracted with MIPC as the regional planning agency to lead the process to obtain community input. I'm Carlos Montañez, I'm the Principal Planner and Project Manager for Wakefield Vision 2030 Process. I would like to acknowledge and thank the work of the MAPCT members shown on the slide who also helped with the planning process outreach efforts as well as with meeting facilitation. Also, much thanks to the Wakefield Vision 2030 Advisory Committee members for their time and all their ideas on community outreach, their help with drafting the survey questions and meeting participation, and thanks to the Wakefield Municipal Team and to all the residents and stakeholders who attended a virtual workshop or filled out a survey. Their input helped us determine the extent of community support for various ideas. Next slide, please. MIPC is the Regional Planning Agency for Greater Boston. We function as a public consultancy and we strive to help communities supplement local community planning capacity. We perform analyses, we help brainstorm ideas, and we explore common solutions to issues that oftentimes can cross municipal boundaries. Next slide, please. Crafting a vision statement and a plan can help communities like Wakefield with imagining how to influence town's future by purposefully eliciting and synthesizing community input and thoughtfully coalescing them into community-sourced goals. These higher-level goals can help set the tone for future town decisions and actions. The goals are paired with recommended best planning practices and strategies for possibly achieving the community consensus goals. The vision statement and the consensus goals can be included in marketing materials for highlighting town assets and that the town is ready to welcome outside investors as well as new community members. Next slide, please. The Wakefield Vision 2030 Process included a 15-member advisory group, committee meetings, and three virtual workshops. The three online public Zoom presentations and discussions were carefully paired with informational content and three online community surveys for extended opportunities for input. We also placed paid Facebook ads to ensure screen time on people's mobile phones and home computers. The municipal team and volunteer advisory group members also helped place flyers and made paper ballots available for those who requested them. We had approximately 185 to 195 workshop participants and 922 survey responses, which were the primary method for recording individual input in a standardized manner that helped with discerning and measuring consensus. Best community outreach efforts were made to approximate the town's typical meeting participation figures between the workshops and the survey responses. Next slide, please. There were a total of 12 visioning topics that were addressed in the workshops and surveys for providing information and ideas for community reaction before requesting input via the surveys. The vision topics included eight conventional planning topics such as open space, transportation, housing, and economic development. And the final workshop and survey addressed four quality-of-life and shared values topics in order to identify common ground ideas. Next slide, please. Before getting into some further process and outreach details, we thought we'd highlight the vision statement now and show the fruit of our collective effort to better convey what the outcome was. The mission of the Vision 2030 Project is to pull together best ideas and the town's best assets for improving Wakefield in the future. Part of that mission includes rallying people around common goals and advance the most compelling ideas and goals through future group decisions, actions, and investments. The vision is only a start and it will require constant future efforts and decisions by the town and community members to achieve an even better future condition for Wakefield. The vision speaks to the protection of Wakefield's beautiful natural landscape, parks, and neighborhoods, welcoming and supporting residents, old and new, and of all backgrounds and life stages, improving neighborhoods with more housing choices and pedestrian and biking amenities, enhancing business districts with more services, amenities, and job opportunities, more creative placemaking amenities as well as festive events, investing in a potential legacy civic project to contribute to what past generations have bestowed to Wakefield that present-day residents enjoy, and lastly, reducing car dependency through transportation innovations to support residents as well as shops. Next slide, please. That was a preview of the vision and some of the goals. Now we'll touch on a few more process details before returning to vision highlights. The team and advisory group coordinated with Wakefield Community Access Television to broadcast the three workshops on the WCAT website and on Facebook. The three recordings can be viewed at the links on the bottom right of the slide. Beyond paper flyers and town website postings were MIPC Community Engagement Specialists directly touched base with 38 civically active community superconnectors that were identified by the municipal team and advisory group members. Community superconnectors are stakeholders who are very active and have broad social connections, and our team connected with them in order to ensure that we were getting the word out beyond social media and the internet. Next slide, please. Next slide, yeah, thank you. Much time was dedicated to choosing and wording purposeful survey questions that could elicit community feedback and ideas on a variety of subjects and topics. The surveys were the primary form of obtaining and measuring feedback and were meant to also provide community members with more time to provide feedback at their own pace. Several iterations of distilling the open comments and interpreting the results of the multiple-choice questions resulted in MIPC being able to determine high consensus goals for Vision 2030. In response to those consensus goals that were identified, MIPC paired the goals with recommended best planning practice strategies to help Wakefield decide in the future how to approach achieving its own community goals. Next slide, please. The Vision 2030 Report features one vision statement, covers 12 topics, and resulted in 29 high consensus community goals. Of the 29 high consensus goals, six were identified as priority goals and strategies. There are a total of 27 recommended strategies that pair with the goals. Next slide, please. An executive summary map highlights some of the high-level goals and strategies that are somewhat area-specific and spatially based in town. Among some of the highlights from the map are aspirations for expanded mixed-use residential opportunities in the general downtown area through infill redevelopment, more permissive and flexible zoning to accommodate different uses paired with design standards, attracting and encouraging reinvestment in commercial properties to contribute to the town's tax base, and also enhance the streetscape with active storefronts, and a possible legacy project in the form of a new or renovated high school and/or a lakeside promenade, as well as protecting the town's beautiful natural landscape. Next slide, please. Some of the highlighted goals from the vision statement include the enhancement of neighborhoods and business districts with safe and pleasant walking and biking amenities, more opportunities for services, jobs, and housing options, expanding the cultural landscape through creative placemaking installations and events, investing in the aforementioned civic legacy project that could be a significant and new landmark facility to contribute to the beautiful landscape and complement the town's beautiful existing assets that were left behind by past generations, and lastly, provide more ways of getting around with creative transportation options. Next slide, please. Following two final presentation slides highlight some of the six priority goals and strategies. It is worth mentioning that six priority goals and the total 29 consensus goals cover a variety of overlapping issues and aspirations. It can be very briefly summarized as touching on housing affordability, non-car-dependent mobility options, commercial reinvestment needs, and investment of time and resources to expand civic facilities as well as public health and social connectivity programs and needs. Realizing the vision will require pursuing parallel efforts on more than one or two of the goals for the next several years throughout the 10-year planning horizon of Vision 2030 and possibly beyond. Some of the priority goals and strategies include protecting and improving Wakefield's most special places and physical assets, its natural resources, its parks and recreational areas, as well as the downtown business district. A recommended strategy for achieving this could be to create a local preservation fund pursuant to the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act, or CPA, for open space and historic preservation projects. Another priority goal was addressing the needs of almost one-third of Wakefield's households that are cost-burdened. Cost-burdened households spend more than a third of their monthly income on housing expenses. The town's current housing production plan has expired, and as a step in addressing the housing affordability, updating the plan in tandem with demonstrating steady progress to the state through annual housing production targets will help address the goals and the needs and also afford Wakefield local control over residential proposals. Next slide, please. This last presentation slide highlights a few other priority goals and strategies. Among them are the goal for an evolving transportation network by creating a purposeful, interconnected network of transportation options. This network could include weaving together circulator shuttle vans, bike lanes, pedestrian and pedestrian trails with commuter train stations. This could in turn help to provide mobility options for youth, seniors, and those with limited mobility, also help business districts with high parking demand, and help with connecting parks and natural areas to trails and paths. The last priority goal that we'll highlight is pursuing more inclusion efforts for greater representation in various municipal and social functions, specifically through direct outreach via a dedicated employed liaison, also expanded social media outreach, and possible awareness campaigns for mental health programs, as well as expanded social services to support community social workers. Last slide, please. So this concludes the presentation of the final draft plan. I wanna thank you for your time, and we will be accepting public written comments during the next three weeks by the November 15th deadline. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Montañez. That was excellent. Any questions, comments from the council?
Maybe just to sort of, kind of close the loop on it. You know, I think what you're seeing here is sort of the end of a process for Vision 2030, but really the beginning of a process as well, for then thinking about how do we reflect sort of the vision and the values that were reflected in this document from the feedback we got from residents in our future plan. So I know we've talked in these meetings about the master planning process. I think a lot of the work that we've done here feeds directly into that process. It also feeds into things like the decisions that, you know, our board will make around, you know, funding with the ARPA funds that will have available investments we wanna make in capital projects in future years. Things like that that really can, I think, draw upon what we've heard through this process and help us build sort of a plan for the future for the community that really reflects, I think, some of the things that were important to folks. I'll just highlight a couple of things that I don't think were too surprising to me, but I thought came through loud and clear. One was investment in sidewalks and pedestrian mobility. That actually came up in all three of the virtual forums that we did. And certainly when we looked at the written surveys as well, that was one of those high consensus items. You know, we talked a lot about development and housing, and what was interesting was, particularly in the discussions, I didn't hear a lot of people that were reflexively sort of pro-development or anti-development, but sort of reflecting that, you know, there were a number of different things that we wanted to try to achieve. It's important to protect our natural resources, and that came through loud and clear. But people also talked about the fact that we do have an affordability problem in Wakefield and that there are segments of our community, you know, thinking about seniors and some of the folks that actually shared stories at the housing forum last week, you know, whose needs aren't being met. You know, finally, I think civic spirit was another thing that came through and wanting to make sure that we continue to build and reinvest in the ways that our community comes together with some of the great events that we have and some of the places that help us convene. So again, a lot more work to do, you know, even as we finish this project, but, you know, I think certainly gives us the grounding to have some really robust conversations for the future.
It's gonna be a really valuable document, and I know there's always concerns about doing big studies like this and putting it up on the shelf, but this sounds like one that we're gonna have to keep really front and center as we make some of these big decisions. Councilor Gernig?
Yeah, well, this is very exciting. Thank you, and thank you for everybody for putting such hard work into this, and I think it's fantastic. One thing is, is that the worry is that you do these studies and then they do get put on that shelf, and I think that this kind of reinforces the importance that we hire a town planner. I think that we need somebody who is invested in Wakefield, who is, has long-range visioning to look at the town as a whole, and I think that that is, I think that that's really needed. I also like, I don't know, there's so many things about this that I like. I do like, and what I hear a lot too, is that as we develop this, as this town does get more developed, is the importance of maintaining, making sure that we really do provide recreational space and open space and preserve open space as much as possible and that that goes into the planning. And I like the idea about talking about the Community Preservation Act, that something that could help us with historical preservation, maintaining open space as our town goes through the next stages. So, thank you. It was fantastic.
Yeah, just to echo, thank you Carlos and everyone else that worked on this. I was looking at the slides and just recalling that everything was done virtually, and I actually think it was more accessible to people. Like, I feel like we really got a little different, looking at one of the pictures, you know, we had members of our youth council participating, some people who don't necessarily, I hadn't seen them at previous events, so I really enjoyed this process. I am really excited to have this kind of being a livable, breathable document that we continuously refer to and just wanna echo, you know, sidewalks and mobility. And then some of the other stuff that, you know, I feel like there's a lot in this that we have started the conversation, and so just to keep on having that conversation. But yeah, who, you know, I think when we first proposed this, it might not have been pandemic.
It was pre-pandemic.
Yeah, so the fact that we were able to get this final draft, you know, and have these, have, you know, almost 1,000 individual touchpoints is pretty, just really impressive. And thank you Erin and MIPC and Jonathan and, you know, Julie and Steve and everyone for your leadership on that. And then can we just talk a little bit about public comments? So is this gonna be online? Is there a website that we should be sending people to to weigh in?
So I'll chime in. Hello, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. Thank you so much. And hi Carlos, great presentation. I just wanted to real quick marinate, this was kind of the first task that was given to me, one of my first tasks when I started.
It's true, it was pre-Erin as well.
And Jonathan, and to reiterate, like, you know, I think when we started this process, it was kind of questionable how we're gonna make this. work within a public engagement. You know, this is a huge public engagement piece, and I just want to thank all the residents for for working with us. I think we had some really great conversations. And I I do agree, you know, it would be nice to have some sort of hybrid model in the future, but I I just want to hats off to everyone that joined us. We had got some really good information. So I just wanted to say that. I'm going to be working with Jen to get this online for that public comment period after this presentation. So we do have a webpage set up right now for Vision 2030. So I imagine that's where you will find this document to to link and make comments. So I'll work with Carlos and Jen on that to get that that set up there as soon as possible.
Great. Counselor, something?
Just very briefly, thank you, Jonathan, too, because this this was your baby. You really pushed this, pre-pandemic, pre-Erin. And it's come together really beautifully. I was impressed, and I think it's such a great idea that we had an outside group dig deep into the data and come up with common points, because I don't know that we necessarily would have done that. I think our eyes would have been too subjective and in a little, our lens isn't as good as someone from the outside looking in. So that was that was great to hear, and I think what they brought up is what I saw. I was able to participate live for one of the programs discussions and invert, you know, watch recordings on the other two. But yeah, it was a great process. And to Maureen's point, hearing from people who I don't know that we have heard from before, people were very thoughtful. And they weren't trying to ram down, I I didn't find people had agendas they were trying to ram down. They were very thoughtful in their comments on the particular topic. So, great job.
I just want to highlight on the point of bringing in an outside organization. That actually Jen McDonald was the one who suggested that initially. I think partly because when I first met with her, we kind of looked at this and Jen rightfully said, gosh, this is a lot of work for us to do internally. And so, you know, I I want to make sure we recognize, you know, the the work that she's done here as well, because she's also been involved from the very beginning.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, just the baseline data to have is amazing.
Can I make a suggestion? Sorry. So I I love, I definitely did a lot of the surveys and, you know, looked at the website. I'm just thinking of of looking of the due date of one public comment period, and we have town meeting coming up. And just thinking about maybe some hard copies for people at town meeting also, just to get some more feedback. I know we did do hard copies at the library and senior center, but just we'll have people at town meeting on November sixth, so. Yeah, this was great, though. Great job, everyone. And I I'm going to push back on Anne, because I have my own agenda in here also, so, you know, like, we all did. But but yes, no, I I I think it made you think of things that you hadn't thought about, like so many great new ideas, you know.
If from a different perspective sometimes.
Completely.
Yeah.
I I, yeah, absolutely. Any other comments? Steve, do you want to add anything?
I want to thank Erin for, Erin and and Jen for putting my confirmation picture on the cover, first of all. That was the most important thing that they did.
That's actually your picture on the website.
Yeah, that's our picture everywhere.
We might be due for a new photo there.
I was so impressed, having been in all three of the seminars. I was a note taker. All different walks of life, all different different people and, you know, with all with a different story, but really very thoughtful. And we kind of wondered how that would work virtually, and it worked really well. M A P C did a great job and, you know, people coming out, going into a breakout room, coming back, you know, these, having to, for the most part, sign up ahead of time so we knew who was coming in. And it was really a wonderful program, and we didn't lose anybody. People were able to come out and come back in, so I thought that was great. I I learned a lot, a lot of different perspectives on things that made me look at things a little differently, so I look forward to the next step on this, and it really will be a big help as we move forward in a lot of in a lot of areas. But also was affirmational, because I think a lot of items we kind of, you know, knew we needed to do. We've talked about, you know, mixed use downtown. We've talked about facade programs. We've talked about protecting our lake walkability around the lake. Kind of, you know, data driven brought home a lot of what we were thinking. So I thought it was a great experience and we were all a little hesitant going in. We didn't know how it was going to work with in the virtual world, but it worked really well. So, and M A P C did a great job in moving that along. So thank you for your work on that.
Great. All right. Anything else? Anne, you should make it required reading for the master plan committee that you're liaising with. Not that you could have that power. It'll be good baseline for them.
We'll have copies at town meeting. I think it's about a hundred and eight pages long, if I'm not mistaken. So they will be double sided. At least.
Yeah, we'll double double side. Don't kill too many trees. And so our next project update actually is certainly related to some extent. Counselor Dombrowski, you want to give a brief overview of where we are on Invision Wakefield?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair.
And thank you, Carlos, for for being with us.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay or go.
Thank you.
This is actually going to be a very abbreviated version. I expect I'll probably be back in two meetings' time with Mr. Renaud with a more detailed version, but the bottom line is we have, as everyone knows, engaged in a very long process of determining how we would reimagine our downtown. And so with the the great guidance of V H B, we have a great plan that's that's in place, that is continuing to be refined. And one thing that we found with that and the way that we treated this entire process was we were going to have different segments or different pieces to the plan. And it all came together as one grand plan, you know, going from the junction all the way to the lake and from West Water to basically the seven eleven, you know, right right by Harvard Mills. What I have found in working, you know, further with Mr. Renaud and D P W is that there are a lot of opportunities for us to expedite different segments of the plan, and Albion Street being one such example. We basically took that from the the grand Invision plan, pulled it out, found funding for it, and got that done sooner. And so we're now in the process, as Mr. Mayo knows, I'm looking for everything to be done last week with with this project. And if we're, so we're looking at the the best way that we can strategically plan this project so that we can scoop up available resources that are more readily available to us and then have the the what will likely be middle man continue to be on the tip list, which is going to be, you know, it's just a little bit longer process. So we're trying to see what we what we can peel off, what we can do now or in the very near term. So that way, we're, you know, we're we're moving faster, i- is the bottom line. And there's a lot of benefits to that because we have some roadwork that needs to be done, and just going through normal process could mean that some of the, you know, some of the road might have to be repaired on a temporary basis. We're trying not to do that if we can avoid it. In some instances, some instances, we can't. We have to do that. So we're trying to just be strategic. So I'm working with Bill Renaud specifically on this. And I think in two meetings' time, we'll have it kind of better sketched out for everyone to understand. But the great thing is there are a lot of funding opportunities available through the state, through complete streets and any number of programs. But if we just take, you know, each of them have different requirements, if we take the segments and justify each in a different way to meet the the particular criteria, it best positions us to be able to actually execute on that immediately. So it's exciting, it's exciting, but it's it's obviously a pretty laborious process. And Mr. Renaud has been, he's been talking a lot about being involved, I guess, with a like a train crossing issue, he was saying in the last year or so. It's taken up a little bit of his time, but we, that's coming to an end. So fortunately, we'll be able to refocus his attention squarely on how we can make this happen. So I I would say probably not next meeting. I think the meeting following that would be when I'd be able to.
So we're not following kind of a strict twenty-five percent design, fifty percent design, or are we?
Well, we are for for what ultimately is going to be submitted to be on the on the tips.
For the tip, okay.
But the question is where we want to carve so that what we submit to the tip can can be moved along faster and cost justified faster. For example, in front of the 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 Galvin, there are a lot of opportunities to do that work through different programs that would be faster than the tip. So that's why we're trying to see what we can do to maximize that.
Excellent. That's great.
And Bill, if you have anything to add relative to that, I know we've talked a lot about it, but.
No, I think I think you summarized it all well. Yeah, that's pretty accurate. I think we can, you know, hopefully exclude out a bunch of these parts of it. So we'll be working over it in the next month or so and hopefully have a much better, you know, clearer vision of how we can do this and and better timings of when things will actually start happening, so.
And we'll continue to have the community meetings and all the rest relative to that, looking at the design, getting community input. Everything else is straightforward, but it may just be a unique way of us moving things along faster.
I just, so, so, no. Oh, go, you know.
Nope, no, please.
So I just had a follow up, Counselor, and to, so so you'll be back in two weeks. Is there something we're voting on? Two meetings, two meetings, four weeks. Is there something we're voting on or just like, do we have any votes coming up on it? No.
It's just an update.
Got it. Okay.
And just a quick question. I'm probably asking you to steal some thunder from your presentation at two meetings, but can you remind us, where are we in terms of the design process for the tips portion? Were we at the fifty percent design or I I've lost track of sort of where we were in the process.
So we're we're at, we're at twenty-five percent in terms of submitting to Mast D O T. So that's really what it is. And and I know over the summer and into the into this fall, Bill has been working with V H B on providing the town's feedback to the V H B's design. And then that gets submitted. I think it's about a ninety day window once that's submitted, give or take, Bill, relative to that. The question is what that submitter will look like, because we think we'll do something where we're going to define what is best. We're going to, just to clarify, what what we can best position for, you know, the tip program, and then everything else, we're going to try to find in different ways. To extend again.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Looked like the House bill came out today with some budget from the surplus and the ARPA that might have some interesting. I know it's still long, early in the process, but fingers crossed. Okay.
Ready for that.
Excellent. So we will have you back probably towards the end of November.
I think it'll probably be, I'd say about a month from now, two meetings out, probably, yeah.
Great. All right. So two exciting things happening on our updates. And so moving on to item seven, we have our annual update from Zoning Board of Appeals, Planning Board, and Conservation Commission. And as I think everybody in this group knows, I believe we did not assign liaisons to these groups, right? Because we really wanted to kind of have you all come here and and understand kind of how each other works and how you're working together for the whole council and for the community. So we're really pleased to have you here. Looks like we will start with the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Raffield, welcome.
Thank you. How's everyone doing tonight?
Doing great.
Doing great.
Good. I submitted the slides. Do you have it? Will they be?
We do have them, and they can turn them for you. They should show up here shortly.
So these slides, I think just about everyone, I think, was on the council two years ago when we were last before the board, except maybe Anne. So you've seen, you may remember some of these slides, and I can, again, in the interest of the time, I know you have more topics to go through. At whatever level you want, I can just jump right to the things that are currently before us or give you.
No, I can go through them. The people are watching and so you don't have to go through every word, but, you know, you can touch upon it, definitely.
Okay. All right. So next slide, please. So this same as it was a couple of years ago, again, just when zoning was enacted in town, what kinds of applications the Board of Appeals hears, you know, appeals, special permit, variances, and various kinds of findings. And again, in case people think the Zoning Board of Appeals reviews zoning bylaw changes, we don't. They go through the planning board in a public hearing, and then they have to go to town meeting and approve, get approved by two thirds of the public. So just a reminder on those aspects, foundational aspects. Next slide, please. So since we're here in September of nineteen, so over the last two years, the board has deliberated on or is currently deliberating on a hundred and eleven applications. So the board's been busy. And they range from all the variances, permits, findings, and determinations. And the next few slides will summarize some of the the key ones. So next slide, please. So it's a long list. I'll just touch on, again, summarize the top two or forty B projects, Tarrant Lane and Main Street. They have yet to pull permits as far as I know, and Erin and I have talked many times on on where they stand. But when they do, we certainly look forward to them pulling permits and getting started so we can officially count them on our subsidized housing inventory. But those are the forty Bs from a couple of years ago, this October, November. You see some mid-rise apartments in here. You see the two hundred, four hundred Quonopawat. We actually permitted that to be sort of an R and D and office facility and update the site before the current application, which is in a subsequent slide, came before us. So we did that a while ago. You can see, again, some gas stations in here, the Shell and Mobil on Main Street. I'm sure everyone sees those. The mid-rise apartments on Salem Street, we did earlier this year. Santander Bank on Main Street, which is getting started. Four-four Lowell across from the strip mall there where Elitharbs and other places, it hasn't started for whatever reason, but that's been permitted for eight units. And most recently, the sixty-two and seventy-six Foundry, the old site of Crystal Lumber, that's been permitted as a mixed use just recently. I'm not sure, I don't, I think decisions have been filed. And then the Savings Bank on Main and Chestnut was most recently done our last hearing. Next slide, please. So other types of applications, we continue to get wireless upgrades. So there's a bunch of towers and facilities around town, and the the carriers regularly come to us to upgrade their facilities to four G, five G, you know. So we get those residential findings, permit variances. We get those, again, on a regular basis from accessory apartments, renovations, additions, garages, pools, all kinds of things. And in some cases, there's conversions from two to three family or three to four, and legality. Sometimes there's a discrepancy between how a property is being used or has been used and what is legally declared as. And sometimes we have to make a finding to make it official, to clear up any sort of title issues and so forth. So perhaps a property could be updated or sold. And then what's been on our sort of standard practice for some time now is whenever we do permit, say, a business, we'll have a condition in there that retains jurisdiction over the signage. So not only what they want to do initially with their sign package, but if they want to change something down the road, we want an opportunity to be able to review any updates and make sure that what they want to change is consistent with what we already approved. Right? And, you know, some sometimes are in the sign overlay district, sometimes they're not, but we always want to retain jurisdiction on that and review what they they're looking to do. So we've done, you can see a bunch of those over the last couple of years. Next slide. So this is what's currently active before us. It's a small list, but obviously the the top couple very important. The two hundred, four hundred Quonopawat Parkway, a multifamily mixed use with four hundred and eighty-five units. Saw an update today that they're working through a traffic study with the T A C. They've heard some of the feedback we've we've given them, and I'm hearing that they're going to come back in November with perhaps a larger mixed use component to it and perhaps fewer units. So we haven't seen the updated plans. We expect to see them in November, and we'll see where that goes as long as well as the traffic study. And, you know, that project will continue. Crescent Street, forty B, initially committed like four stories, fifty-six units, through a lot of work with a subcommittee and a consultant from M H P. We've negotiated that down to forty units and smaller scaled back. You know, three and a half story, if you will, it's been scaled back somewhat on the height and mass. But again, that that work continues with the subcommittee and the full board meeting regularly. And then to a smaller one, but at the corner of Water Street and Wakefield Ave, there's a proposed multifamily mixed use. It's it's a white building now, but they're proposing to rehab that and have a, you know, that whole block has a lot of sort of retail at the bottom and and housing above, and they want to do that at this site, too. And it originally came in at five units. It's currently four in the final stages, but it hasn't quite been been tied off, so we're expecting that soon. So that's it for for the multifamily mixed use applications before us. We do have an accessory apartment that's coming back at our next hearing, as well as one of those conversions on Nellie Street. So those are the applications before us. Next slide. So this, again, these next two slides are just historical. They were here in the in the last deck we presented. Kind of at the time, a lot of the development was, a lot that we've seen completed now was was underway at that time, and there were questions about where is this coming from? People wanted a better understanding. And again, so we tried to summarize sort of the the zoning changes from two thousand fifteen that spurred some of that, spearheaded in in large part by our previous town planner. And it's, you know, the properties that they were being proposed on revitalized, underutilized or abandoned properties. They were consistent with our vision housing plan from, you know, two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty. And, you know, we we shared a collective concern on traffic, and we've shared that, you know, with with the board and with with Steve and and Bill Renaud, and I understand a study, a traffic signaling study is underway, and so we look forward to hear the results of that and any other mitigating things that the town can do, again, because the board hears these applications one at a time. But it's the accumulation effect of of all of them and what they do in certain areas, especially along the commuter rail area, North Ave and and the surrounding areas, Foundry, et cetera. So we're interested to continue to be part of that conversation as we move forward. Next slide. This is the last one. So again, just covered some of this in that housing forum last week, again, just the nature of these projects and how extensive these reviews are. Again, it's a wordy chart, I won't go through all of it, but you know, the takeaway is it's, they tend to be long sets of hearings that can last nine to 12 months or more depending. We're covering so many different aspects of each of these projects to ensure they meet not only the requirements of the multifamily mixed use parts of the bylaw, but also the special permit requirements. So there's a lot to cover, there's a lot of criteria. And again, these take a lot of time from the board and the public and the applicants and consultants, peer reviews that take place. So there's a lot that goes into them, I hope and appreciate, I think the town council appreciates what goes into them, but we certainly want to make sure anyone else listening who maybe isn't, has a full understanding of the process and how involved it can be, that it really is. So with that, I think, next slide. Yep, that's it. So I'm happy to answer any questions the counselors may have.
Thank you. Very informational. I know you've been very busy. Questions, Councilor Denbrowski?
Just to do that, Madam Chair, thank you. The, I think first off, there's a common misconception that we as a town council are in charge of development, making development. I think there's a common misconception.
I'm not hearing.
Oh, you can't hear us?
Is it unmuted?
I'm not sure.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear me, Sherry?
Completely quiet.
Oh.
Julie?
Can you hear us? I'm talking.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay. Try again.
All right. So can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So I think there's a common misconception that our body, the town council, is in charge of making development decisions, which we are not. And we certainly appoint to the Z B A, but ultimately the Z B A is an independent body that's making these determinations after analysis. And I appreciate why people come to us, you know, with their concerns and questions and I hear a lot of them, but I do think it's important to understand that concerns are best directed to the Z B A meetings during the public participation portion if you have any issue with a particular project. I'm certainly welcome to hear and I raise the concerns that I hear, but I think that that's an important distinction to be made that is often lost. From the feedback that I receive from residents on a fairly regular basis, two things come to mind, height and density. I think that the Harvard Mills project there stands out to a lot of folks of late as, you know, a project that is incredibly tall and incredibly dense. And I know that in hearing a lot of the concerns of residents about changing the character of our community, the notion of going too big and going too tall is something that seems to be a common refrain that I hear again and again. And I think people have legitimate concerns about that. I do think that we are in a challenging space. I understand that at the state level, the idea of increasing housing production is a priority. I get that. I understand, you know, that there are agencies and departments focused on that, but we don't have a lot of empty parcels of land here in Wakefield. If you go up north a bit more, you'll find, you know, acres and acres of developable land. We don't have that here. And so I feel like we're continuing to try to, you know, cram these large projects on parcels or property that they just don't fit on. And I understand that Wakefield's a desirable location, you know, we're by intersection of two major highways, we're just outside of Boston, I get all that. But when we're talking about the priority of balancing quality of life, you know, Jonathan, to your point earlier with 2030 about making sure we have sufficient, you know, outdoor space, recreational space, we don't, the proportion of recreational space and open land to what we're developing or the number of residents or the number of units, if you will, we're losing it. You know, we're losing that and we can't build more land. And I think that's one of the concerns that I hear from a lot of folks and I actually share that concern. I think that, you know, that this idea that will through, you know, permitting fees and the like, be able to create some sort of financially sustainable, you know, revenue stream, that's not the case because we can't keep, you know, at the pace we are. I'm glad to hear, for example, Crescent Street has gone down from, I think it was what, 57 if I'm not mistaken initially?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six down to 40. That's still a lot and we're taking out a couple, you know, older homes there, I think it might be three in total and we're putting in this, we're putting this rather massive project from my perspective. And strangely, the one place that I would expect and I think was always the intention of the development was right along Main Street. And if you think about Main Street, much of it is a single story, you know? And that would be the logical place where you'd maybe have retail on the first floor and then, you know, housing on the second and third. So, and it's really easy to, you know, to the commuter rail. But we're not seeing that, you know, from these development projects. We're seeing single or perhaps two families knocked down and then these bigger, I think two big structures consistently put in there. And so I know that we can't influence what the Z B A does certainly, but I'll say that, you know, the resident feedback I've gotten has been really clear that we're just going too tall, too dense and just too many. And so I think we're distinct from some other communities out in the greater Boston area and that we don't have the land to support this going forward. So I guess that was more of a comment than a question.
I would call that a comment and one I think we've all heard to some extent, definitely. And so David, when, do you get a lot of public comments when you're looking at some of these larger projects? Like, how engaged are you finding people?
They're engaged, we get a lot of participation. You know, every meeting, again, when there's new testimony, sometimes we're just getting updates, but by and large, every hearing, there's engaged public comments from the Butters and other concerned citizens, absolutely. And we, you know, the board in many respects shares the same concerns and we then work with the applicant to try to shape the project. Each project has its own sort of unique qualities of what property it's on, the style, the, you know, the density and how much land they have to work with. So each one is unique in its own way, but yes, we get a lot of public participation and peer review comments from other town boards, right? The engineering department, Bill's team and others review from Site Civil and Stormwater Management, you know, that's one thing, again, that maybe is lost on people. A lot of the ones that we've done in the last five years or so were, again, a lot of it was driven by the zoning changes that encouraged more dense projects around the commuter rails. So that sort of spurred some of that density discussion, but also, you know, just the nature of the projects we're seeing and some are 40B like the one in Crescent, our hands are somewhat tied when they're 40B, you know? So we work on each one individually and weigh the merits of each one, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, they reach a challenge in their own way, sorry.
No, no, no. I think that's, you know, it's good to get your insight. You've been through these and they're long processes. Were there any, Councilor Tynes?
Sure, just a couple of comments. First of all, Mr. Hatfield, thank you for not only the presentation tonight, but to you and your colleagues on the Z B A for all the work that you do. I know a lot of people who watch our meetings also participate in some of the Z B A meetings and so I'm sure it's not lost on them and I hope it's not lost on us on the council as well, that in many ways, I think the Z B A is probably the hardest working board in Wakefield. The sheer amount of detail that you guys have to process and understand and look through for any project, let alone the 111 that you guys have worked on in the last two years, is really stunning. You know, it requires a level of time and commitment, not just in the meetings, but also outside. You know, that certainly is intense. So thank you for that and I think for taking sort of the long view on some of these projects as well. You know, you mentioned Crescent Commons as a 40B. You know, our reality of course is that, you know, as a community, you know, our hands are somewhat tied with that, but you know, we've seen examples where, you know, I think the Z B A has been successful at trying to, you know, negotiate with the developers to maybe not address every concern that we have in the town and I think all of us on the council sort of share the concerns that Councilor Denbrowski raised about the density of that one, but certainly see progress there, so appreciate that. I just wanted to comment for a minute on the traffic study issue that you raised, Dave, and you know, maybe ask Mr. Mayo if we could have sort of a future discussion or presentation to our board around thinking about the collective traffic impact of development in the Foundry Street area. You know, I think certainly we're seeing not just sort of a couple of discrete developments there, but a trend where Foundry Street is really changing. You know, there really is sort of a district being developed there and, you know, I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing, you know, again, setting aside particular concerns on individual projects there. You know, it does make sense that we're looking at mixed use and housing there and I'm actually glad that that's a direction we're taking. But I think the point that Mr. Hatfield raised around the collective traffic impact of that, particularly in an area of town that already is fairly congested because of the choke points and traffic with the railway crossings there. You know, I'd love to see sort of more of a collective analysis and it sounds like some of that work, you know, with Mr. Renaud is already underway.
If I'm not mistaken, that is happening now or being contracted, happened now because what happens in all those individual studies that you said, you know, this building is going to have a de minimis effect. This building's going to have a de minimis effect.
But when you have eight of them.
All of a sudden you have eight of them, maybe it's not so de minimis. So and one thing we're doing is also expanding it, not just to look at Foundry Street, but to look at Broadway.
Right.
The junction and some of the other surrounding areas. So I think that's basically what Bill and I have talked about and what we're doing and we will bring that back.
Terrific, thank you.
Councilor Danny?
Thank you so much for that presentation. It was super helpful, especially for me being new on the town council and I know how hard you all work and I know somebody was telling me how late your meetings go and that's like really, that's tough, especially as a volunteer, you probably have to get up the next morning and, you know, go to your day job. So I appreciate all that. I do think, well, I know that while we don't make development decisions, I think that the town council could be helpful by supporting Z B A and I think a town planner would be helpful for that. I think the master plan should be helpful and one thing that you mentioned, David, was that, you know, you're looking at individual projects, but then it's the cumulative effect and I think that that again, reiterates the importance again of having a town planner who's looking at the whole picture. And I just did a quick addition and it looks like we're facing a cumulative 5% population growth from 2019 to where we have our projects. I just did the number of units and I multiplied it by 1.5, so like 1.5 people and it came out to be like a 5%. That's a lot. That's a lot of growth for our community and I am concerned that we're in a very dense, if you look at Middlesex, the communities within Middlesex County, that we're more dense than all the other communities and we seem like we're doing more development. And I'd like, you know, I'd like to see more, you know, we talked about the trend of, you know, creating housing along the commuter rail was the whole idea was so that people could be, we could reduce the amount of cars, that people could travel by foot, but the idea was that there'd be retail too. And I'm not seeing a lot of retail, I'm not seeing a lot of retail being added. Is I know Foundry Street is going to have a small restaurant. The Lake was talking about a coffee shop, I heard that that was, now they're looking at a restaurant. I think it needs a coffee shop and a restaurant because I think both should be there. So I would like to see more projects coming in that have that retail component because I think that that's the way, you know, the people who are coming on Foundry and Grayson have stores that they can go to and places so that they can walk. I think that would be super helpful, but again, that's like working on long-term visioning plans. Yeah, so that's it, but thank you so much. It was really, it was, your presentation was really helpful.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Actually just had two questions. I'm hoping, like, someone could add to this in a more definitive way because I know we've talked about it a lot. We hear about the 40B threshold. Do we know now, based upon our census figures from 2020, where we stand? Where are we at in relation to that 10% based on whatever our newer population number is?
I would love for Erin to pick that one.
Hi, hello again. Yeah, so I've been working on this based on our 2010 numbers. The census figures just came out. I do kind of have this spreadsheet, which I know has been passed around before, showing where we're at with these projects being approved. Unfortunately, I don't have that in front of me right now, but more than happy to share that information with you guys again. Right now, if you look at the state website, it says 6.7%, but with a bunch of the projects that just got approved, I'm working on paperwork to be submitted to the state, which will bring us closer to seven, I'm trying to think on the top of my head, point two or more. But then again, this doesn't include the projects that are currently going through the Z B A process. It doesn't include Tarrant Lane right now because that had to be pulled off because they didn't pull building permits. That doesn't include Harvard Mills currently because they're kind of in that threshold right now where they're 18 months from where they pulled their building permit for their occupancy permit, but that will be coming back online soon too. So we are getting close to that 10% based on the 2010 census figures. I think, you know, of all the projects that have been approved as well as Greenwood Station, that's a 40B which hasn't really pulled anything yet, so that's not included. We are getting close to that 9%. Again, this includes projects that are currently going through the Z B A process. Again, more than happy to share that information with you. I have a whole spreadsheet that I log it. It's interesting and it, you know, something I took on when I took the position. There's a lot of moving parts when you submit these documents between when building permits are pulled, when occupancy permits are then issued, when they can be on the list, when they can't, but I do think we'll see those numbers increase quite a bit once these projects, you know, open their doors. So I don't know, Steve, if you have anything more to add to that?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. The Tarrant Lane, which was on the list and now is off the list and we hope to get back on the list. In fact, there's a meeting coming up in the beginning of November with them to see where they're going. That's a big project and it's a 40B project, so I can't remember the number of units, but it's.
173.
What?
173.
Yeah, so that'd be 173 units, all will count. It's a rental, so that's a big jump for us, but right now it doesn't count. So we're getting close, getting very close.
Something else to note with 40Bs is if they're rentals, they all count, correct, Steve?
Right, so that's a rental, so that all counts on that one, yeah.
Yep, and then ownership, it's only the 25%.
But in the end, that's really the owner's decision, right? How they.
Correct.
Right. I mean, that's one part of this is everybody thinks we have kind of all control, but these are privately owned.
I think if we remember what Ezra said the other day at the forum, is that, you know, hopefully, you know, the 40B doesn't happen, right? Hopefully through our inclusionary zoning, which is a much better process for us, we have a little bit more say. We can control our own destiny a little bit better. If we can come in with those, we have better projects. So that's what we're trying to do. Having that 18% affordability ratio is huge and very different than a lot of the communities around us and something we should probably be very proud of and does help us set our own destiny a little bit in that area. So we're getting very, very close. Then we get the new census comes in, they move the goalpost on us, or someone doesn't pull building permits and it comes off.
And something I just want to talk, I know, and Councilor Danny brought this up in regards to, and Ed as well, our downtown and people looking to kind of redevelop that area. We have had a number of people since I've started reach out on a number of developed buildings downtown looking to do that whole mixed use residential component. Nothing's come to fruition yet, but it's definitely conversations we've had, so I just wanted to include that.
And some of the buildings that you think of, that why hasn't something happened here? Those, some of the topics we had discussions on, you don't know until they actually file.
The only follow-up on that was, I know, so we've talked a lot about the fact that each of these traffic studies in a vacuum always make the project look like it'll have to impact and then the cumulative impact obviously is more significant. I have a similar concern that I've raised previously relative to the taxing of our services and our facilities and specifically our schools, because each of these projects we'll hear, we're going to add like three kids to the school system, which, you know, seems, you know, they always seem like a very rosy picture. I mean, it does mean that it costs us more in terms of probably having more police, you know, on a given shift or firefighters and all the sorts of things. Maybe it means, you know, different, you know, ladder trucks or other kind of capital expenditures that are going to mitigate a given height or whatever the case might be. But I do think that there is a real tangible cost to that that seems to get more easily buried in a particular project presentation than looking at it in total. So I don't know in what, in what way, because I know this is different really than D P W, but you know, what direction we can go in as a council to figure out how we do that kind of more holistic look at how the overall impact of these projects is, you know, going to change the population at the Walton, which is, as I understand it, at last check was pretty much filled, you know, at this point, even after the renovation. So how do we address that issue too? Because I think it's another part, and I think, you know, frankly, that's something helpful for the Z B A to have. helpful for the ZBA to have, as well, a, a broader picture of, of what we're looking at in total with these, the, the aggregate of these projects.
So the two, um, just if I can quickly respond, the 200 Quantapower project before us, um, fiscal impact and economic, uh, economic impact studies were done, and Erin helped, uh, spearhead those, and they got some actual empirical data, um, they talked to, uh, Chief Sullivan, uh, Chief Scory, and Superintendent Lyons, got some real data, and we don't do it on every project, but the scale and, and size of this one, I think warranted some sort of study, so that kind of information is available, um, pulling real data from, from our town and our demographics and so forth, and making some sort of reasonable projections as to what a project, given a certain size and scope, might, um, how they might impact those town services, uh, in terms of needing more staff, or teachers, or buses, et cetera, so that information is available if, if the council members want to review it, at least, uh, for 200 Quantapower, some of the ones we, it, it's probably, I don't know that, um, it's a viable alternative, we could certainly look at doing that more, but this, this one at the top of Lake, it seemed, um, well worth the effort, and, and there were some questions about the data we got, but I think it gave us an indication of where, where things could be impacted.
I saw, and I saw that for 200 Quantapower, and it did, again, present, uh, I thought, a somewhat rosy picture of, things were really good, and it looked encouraging, and economic, you know, impact would be positive, um, but we, we have to be thinking also about, you know, the capital, you know, investment, you know, of adding on to schools, and, you know, and those are the sorts of things that, we don't have a lot of excess capacity for this, so even if we're adding X number of students from this, X number of students from that project, the cumulative effect is going to lead us to have to make, I think, major infrastructure investments over, over time, that we need to be able to, to, you know, project out and plan for, if that's the direction that we're headed in.
Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say is that I, I do think it is a cumulative effect, and I know that they say that that's, you know, people say, oh, it's gonna put stress on services and students coming in, but that doesn't really happen, I think if you look at the pace that we're growing, it's the pace that's the issue, is that we are growing very quickly in terms of adding housing units, and that's, and it, it's, you know, um, I know that Doug Lyons was talking about doing, and the need to do an addition in the Greenwood, so, it, they're really, this is real, these are real things that are happening, so, um, it's not like, oh, maybe, he was talking about that that's gonna be needed, so.
Well, I think the Greenwood probably needs a complete renovation.
Oh, yes, yes, it does, but it's also the addition too, so.
All right, well, let's, um, unless anybody else has anything, we kind of wanted to do this as a group, so, David, please feel free to stay, we're gonna hear from, um, Matt Lowery, Mr. Lowery, on the planning, and then I don't know whether we have somebody here from Conservation, but you've been listening as well, Mr. Lowery, so feel free to kind of give your overview, from a planning board's perspective.
Thank you. All right, thank you for having me, um, just wanna remind people that the role of the planning board is, uh, basically dealing with land use, subdivision of land, zoning issues, so, um, one of the things with the, the subdivisions and, uh, that we deal with is that, for the most part, it's, uh, it's a right that everyone has that has land to be able to subdivide it, so, what we do is to make sure that, um, people exercise their rights in ways that don't infringe on other people or the town, or burden the town, so, uh, if someone wants to propose a subdivision, where they want to put a new road in and add some lots, um, if they meet all the requirements, um, the board has no say in saying that we don't like it, or, you know, we prefer not to have it, it's your right to do it, um, we're there to make sure you follow the rules, basically, um, we don't have a lot of sub, a lot of ti, uh, land in town, so the good news is, we don't have a lot of subdivisions going on, uh, the land that we do have, that is being subdivided, is extremely difficult, and there's, there's problems with it, either it's ledge or, or woods, so, you know, excessive wetlands or something like that, something that we need to work around, um, so there are provisions for us to give some relief, some waivers for some, some items like that, so, that's in the board's purview, if we feel like it's something that would fit the town, then we can go ahead and, and grant some waivers for that, um, so, there's a couple different ways to subdivide land in, in Wakefield, there's a subdivision, uh, a traditional subdivision, where you're gonna put a new road in, you're gonna put lots in, there are requirements you need to follow, um, we, we have our rules and regulations that people need to follow, the plans that need to be submitted, uh, they go through our board, and then, uh, other boards and departments in town, the fire department, DPW, engineering, everyone can comment on that, so, I just wanted to give you an overview on, on how that works, for the subdivisions we've had for, and this is going basically, uh, for the last year, um, what, right, right now, we have our Stark Ave, which has basically just started, we're in the process of, uh, hearing that, um, and one thing with, with the subdivision is, there's a time limit for how long it can take, so, once it's filed, we have 135 days to act on it, unless the applicant extends that period, so, for most of the previous subdivisions in town, um, the applicant has extended the, the time, and some of these subdivisions take nine, 12 months to go through because it's a process, um, but if it comes down to, we need to make a decision, um, by, you know, the statutory time of 135 days, we will do that, so, I just wanna put that out there too, the other, um, subdivisions we have, that are actually, they're, they're in the process of, uh, being constructed, but we still have, uh, say over them at this point, until they are closed up, we have Locust Ave Extension, which is being built, uh, the infrastructure's all in, they haven't started working on the houses yet, 107 Prospect Street, that, um, the road is in, and they've got two of the houses in right now, there's one more house to go, uh, there's Wildwood Street, which is down in Greenwood section, it's basically, uh, a one-lot subdivision, they had to put a new road in there, but it's only for one house, that's under construction now, uh, there's Glendale Ave and Ospey Lane, um, that was kind of a unique one, there were, uh, a couple lots that were by right, uh, approval-not-required plans, and there was one that they did need, uh, relief on, and it was a subdivision, so, there are three houses down there, they're, um, they're in construction now too, uh, and then, we just closed off on Salem Street, 289, 291 Salem Street, um, that had taken, I think it was, from when that was proposed until it was finally built, it was about two years, so, some of these do take a while, we also had a couple preliminary subdivisions last year, and these were basically, um, at the head of Lake, and they were in response to a filing for zoning change up there, so, the, uh, the owners up there used the process of, uh, filing for preliminary subdivision, and that's at Quantapower Parkway, uh, 50 Quantapower Parkway, 200 Quantapower Parkway, and 519 to 507 North Ave, uh, what the filing of the preliminary subdivision enabled them to do is basically lock in the current zoning for seven years, so, um, this is a process, again, that it, it's, it's in statute that, um, owners have a way to protect themselves, um, that's gonna lead into one of my other conversations, um, about zoning changes, um, we are in the process of, uh, doing a zoning, looking at that zoning change around the lake, and, uh, we're doing a very deliberate, uh, process to make sure that, um, basically all the concerns that people have had about, they haven't had enough time to comment, owners haven't been notified, um, there's, there's, the, the process is too quick, we're purposely taking that process methodically and addressing every concern that I have had at being at town meeting for the last 20 years, and all the excuses of why, um, this is being rushed, and it shouldn't be even at town meeting, but, we're taking the process to make sure that we hear everyone, and we're taking it slow and methodical, um, if we jumped into something, uh, and started to restrict people's rights, again, they, the owners have this process where they can pre-zoning, so, uh, we, we wanna do it methodically and have owners' input, because there are ways for owners, property owners to go around it, and at that point, you're gonna have unintended development, which is definitely what we don't want in town, so, so that's, that's the thing with zoning, let me jump back one more thing to, uh, approval-not-required plans, or ANRs, these are another form of subdivisions, basically, that owners can do, if, if they have a lot, and it's on an established road, and they wanted to subdivide it to add another lot, um, they have a means to do that, and this is basically another by right subdivision of land, and these are basically simple plans that are laid out in, in statute, as long as they meet certain requirements, along with the board's rules and regulations, they are entitled for us to basically endorse that plan, we don't approve it, we have really no say in it, um, again, it's their right, so, that's what we are there to, basically, make sure that they follow the rules that we have outlined, the reasonable rules that we've outlined, and if they meet the requirements, they're basically entitled to have that, and those will come up at one meeting, um, we do our best to make sure that when they do come to the meeting, that they, they meet the rules and regulations, so we don't have to extend it, and it's a pretty quick process, some of the ANR plans that have happened in the last year are Border Road, which is, and, and that was more of an ANR where they were combining two lots together, so, you really won't even see a new house or anything there, Evangelist Away, there was a, um, an owner at the end of the cul-de-sac that wanted to add another piece on, so they came before us, again, that's not gonna develop, uh, uh, lead to any new development, um, there was one at 120 Chestnut Street, for the Temple Emanuel, they had, uh, some excess land out back, so they were able to subdivide a piece off to, to build a new house there, so what that allowed is to, for the, the temple to get a little extra money by selling the land and being able to invest back in their building, so, this is a process that anyone who has extra land, they can, they can use this, so, we also have, uh, another one at Vernon Street, that, again, two lot owners wanted to, you know, make the yards a little bit bigger, so one sold a piece to the other, uh, again, it's not gonna be a, uh, a new house lot there, but it's, it's, again, it's someone's right, and, uh, for them to do that, uh, and then we also had, uh, a subdivision at 500 Main Street, which has also gone to the ZBA, uh, this also, uh, went through the planning board originally for a zoning change, so, um, in, in this case, this is a lot that has, uh, jumped around through each of the boards, there's a process, and, uh, it's been followed pretty well, uh, so you're gonna see some new development there, uh, last year, we did have a couple, um, zoning changes, uh, they were, uh, basically, there were a couple lots where, uh, the owner wanted to change the zone to, uh, you know, to fit, to, to better fit some housing needs that were gonna go in there, uh, one of them was on New Salem Street, it was an existing house that was on the edge of the industrial zone, it was kind of unique, because it was, uh, it was half in a residential zone and half in an industrial zone, and because of that, they couldn't use it for either purpose, so, uh, the applicant came before the board, and initially, they came before the board, uh, to change it to a general residence zone, which, uh, I was pretty skeptical at the time, because there was no general residence zone right around there, so, I remind you, in a general, general residence zone, it can be a two-family, uh, so the applicant brought that before us, uh, they successfully argued, uh, and convinced me and other board members that this was the right way to go, in order to be able to change this to general residence, to basically rebuild the existing house that was there and put two units in there, so, this was one way that, um, we basically increased the housing stock by two units, by being a little creative and, and rezoning it, uh, there's another, another lot actually came up the same time on North Ave, um, this is the lot that was next to, uh, that is next to the Nys of Columbus, uh, this is one where, again, the board struggled on this for a while, but, um, we worked through it through many meetings, uh, and then we ultimately decided to recommend favorable action at town meeting, but before we did that, we also made sure that we had a, um, what the owner had proposed was actually gonna be built, so we had a, uh, as, uh, an agreement that was filed and it rode on the deed, so, if this zoning changed, if the zoning amendment changed, they were obligated to do what we had, uh, had talked about in our meeting, and unfortunately, at town meeting, this is one of these projects that, um, seemed to be targeted for overdevelopment, so, uh, this ultimately failed, and, uh, six units that would have been there disappeared, and now this is actually talk of having another 40B up there, which is, uh, kind of disappointing, that, uh, we did some hard work to make sure that we did not have overdevelopment, but now we're gonna have, uh, something that perhaps people aren't gonna be happy with, but that's, that's the way the process goes, and then, so, items for the future, things that we will be working on, uh, I'm sure you've all heard about the master plan, uh, the board's taking that up in conjunction with Erin, and actually, at our next meeting, we're gonna start picking the applicants or the, for the, um, I'm sorry, the applicants for the advisory committee that we're gonna have for this, so, and then, other future items that were, were, that actually Erin and I had just discussed, I haven't even rolled this out to the board yet, is we're gonna do some revisions to the, uh, approval-not-required regulations, uh, we're gonna try to streamline this process, we, we've realized that, um, what we have in our regulations is basically the process before the pandemic, where people have to file a lot of plans, they, it's supposed to get submitted, we're, we're basically mostly all digital now, so, we, we have in our rules and regs that, uh, we require everything by PDFs, we send it out to the board members by PDFs, we're able to post it on our, on our website, so people can see it, so, we're gonna try to, um, revise those slightly, uh, to make it more friendly for, uh, filing, and, uh, basically the new normal we're at, and then we're gonna actually take a look at revising, at least, I'm hope, we're gonna take, hopeful that we can take a look at revising the rules and regulations for subdivisions, um, even though we're not doing a lot in town, um, there are some, some items that we can tweak, there's a lot of waivers that constantly come up, uh, that, um, we can eliminate, such as pipe sizes, uh, pipe materials, things like that, we're gonna do that in conjunction with the DPW and the engineering, so, so that's just a brief overview of, uh, the planning board over about last year, so, if anyone has any questions.
Thank you, you've been very busy as well, and going to get busier, it sounds like, with the master plan, um, and the.
Yeah.
Any comments from the counselors, questions, Counselor Giants?
Just a brief comment, I, I just wanted to say, uh, first of all, uh, Mr. Lowery, thank you for the presentation, and again, for, for the really tremendous work that you and your colleagues do, um, I just wanted to comment on the effort that you've, you've taken on, you know, looking at lake zoning, I, I, you know, sat in on some of the early meetings as, as the town council's liaison to the planning board, and really was impressed with the, you know, just the methodical and kind of thoughtful approach that, that the board's taken with that, you know, obviously, it is, you know, one of those assets in town for us that's really important, and, you know, I, I, I think the, the way in which, um, you and, and Mr. Spalding, when he was chair beforehand, kind of approached this, has been really, really thoughtful and, and well put together, and so, just wanted to acknowledge the work there and say thank you for everything that's happened in that area.
Thank you, uh, I, I know people have seen it as being a little frustrating and slow, but. but, um, I can see what happens if, if we rush things too much. And, uh, the last thing I want is to be, uh, the cause of, uh, some unintended development in town. This last thing we need.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyone else? I think we asked all of our questions before you, before you got on, Matt. Um, yeah, I think, I think that's, that's it.
All right. Well, thank you for having me.
Thank you both.
Thank you both.
Thanks for all your, your work. I guess the takeaway from all this is, um, participate in town meeting and zoning and, because really all you're doing is, is kind of reinforcing the vision that the town is giving you. So.
And I think the importance of the master planning process and participating in that as well.
Absolutely.
I al- I also just want to say that I really enjoy having them come and explain to us as, as Councillor Tendrowski said earlier, like, there's a lot that happens that we're not aware of and like, we can't go to all your meetings. And so I appreciate both of you. I know you guys were on Thursday night. I know you're on tonight. I'm sure you guys have your own meetings, but I really appreciate this. And so yearly might not be enough, I'm just going to say, because, you know, I don't, I can't follow all these projects. And so when people reach out to me, they kind of assume I know. And so, you know, I know we've talked about better communications and letting you do your, your committees do your own thing, but this was really helpful and informative and thank you for that.
I do think that having things in PDFs and online are much more helpful. I mean, I'm pre pandemic, it was kind of, you'd roll them out and you'd, you'd have to be in the room. So, so hopefully that's being a little easier for people to follow things as well.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
If I may say, Madam Chair, really quickly, kudos to the, um, to the land use boards, um, because it was tough when the pandemic first came in.
Yes.
And, um, you know, with the help of our IT department, you know, Erin, Sheri, uh, Jen McDonald putting, making sure we, you know, business still continued. I think we missed one hearing.
I think, yeah, that's what I remember.
It took us a couple of weeks to get everything underway.
Awesome. We were one of the first towns where cities back up and running.
And I know, um, Chair Tendrowski at the time wanted to make sure that, you know, things kept going, right? We kept on servicing the public. And, uh, and we did. And I'll tell you a very brief story. I got accosted, imagine that, at a local restaurant one night during the summer outside. And I was like halfway through going outside just to have, you know, a, a nice dinner downtown. And someone kept going on and on about how its project was stalled and it wasn't being heard. And, uh, the board wasn't meeting. And I said to them, w- wait a minute, wait a minute, what are you talking about? We've been meeting, you know, since, since, you know, March. We haven't really stopped. Oh, no, the project can stone them. I just wanted to tell you about it. Listen, that's great, but I can't help you there. So really kudos to your boards for, um, I know it wasn't easy in the beginning, but I think it is much easier for people to see. You have the plans up there. People can view it much easier. So kudos for going through some tough, uh, tough times and making it work. So thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody from the Conservation Commission here?
Yes, I'm right here. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, please. Welcome. Introduce yourself, please, and, um, feel free to, to share some thoughts.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, but I don't have a picture.
That's okay.
So, uh, go the way I am. Um, as far as conservation goes for this year, we had fourteen notices and ten hearings. We had one ANRAD. And I don't know if you know what an ANRAD is, but it's when we, um, we go to the site and we, we try to agree with the applicant as to where the resource areas are. They use that information to go back and do their designing for whatever structure they want to do. We did that for the vocational school. And, um, we're just waiting, you know, when we get more information, then they'll file a notice of intent and, uh, that'll be something that we work on. The fourteen notice of intent hearings, they're mostly small, um, little projects, like you might have someone that wants to put a pool in or a small addition or that type of stuff. Uh, one of the big things that we have, well, actually what we have, an interesting thing that we have coming out is that we're doing an economical, ecological restoration plan that the, uh, Camp Curtis is doing. This is the first time we've dealt with this. It's kind of, um, they're going to go actually pull all invasive species and there's seven hundred acres to Camp Curtis. What, there's twenty-three acres, I believe, are in Wakefield. And, uh, it's like a seven year, or it's a five-year project for them. And it's, it, for them, it's all dependent on their funding, but their intent is to get as much of the, um, invasive plants out. The other, um, project that we have coming up is, um, of course, Cornpower Parkway. And, uh, that's a big project for us. It's a lot, it's pretty involved. Um, and we've actually hired a consultant to help us, uh, deal with that. Um, and I, I think that's, that's really all I have to say. So, not much, but that's it.
No, that's, that's, that's very helpful.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe since the three of you are still on, how, how do you, the three of you work together? So would you get feedback from the Conservation Commission, for example, before you might make a decision at ZBA or Planning? Um, how does that work?
How does it work? Is that to me?
Um, sure.
Could you repeat that, please?
Sure. I'm, I, I'm just wondering how you interact with the other two committees that are presenting here. So.
Oh, okay. Okay, yes. Uh, you know, we have active, we should be more proactive at that. Um, and actually I think one of you's recommended that we have joint meetings, which I think would be really helpful in some situations. Matt, after, many years ago, that's what we used to do. We, we did a few of those. It was productive for the applicant as well, because he gets to handle both all questions over that entire range of, you know, of, uh, of, uh, disciplines that he'd have to, uh, know about. So I'm all for that. I, we're not, we're not, we haven't done that in a long time, but, um, even for, maybe for a two hundred, Cornpower Parkway, that, that might be a good thing to do.
Great. Anybody else?
Yeah, we, we do have some, some projects that are filed simultaneously with the planning board and, um, with the Conservation Commission. It, now, now that we are remote, it would be good to perhaps get these together because, um, sometimes we have to rely on, uh, what we hear in the meetings from the applicant and then backcheck it later to make sure it's actually correct. Um, and I know sometimes there's two sets of, of plans that get filed. So sometimes, some things that may be on one set are on the other, and it would be good to coordinate to make sure that, that everyone's on the same page. Obviously, the, the applicant would want to perhaps, uh, silo the information to make sure each board doesn't have a control over too much, but, um, there's ways that if we did have, uh, joint meetings that would hap- would definitely help. So.
Great.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comment on that or anything else? Steve, anybody? All right. I think we're going to go let you have some of your evening back, not much of it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome.
It was really, really helpful. Okay. Item number eight, we have a number of appointments. Um, we have appointments to the Conservation Commission for non-voting associate members. Um, we have two applications in our packet. Sheri, we can, can we appoint two? Well, how many openings are there?
Well, these are, these are for, uh, non-voting.
Right.
Associate members for the Conservation Commission. For the youth council, there is just one open middle school appointment.
Exactly. So, yeah, let's start with the Conservation, um,
Yeah.
Commission. Um, do I have a motion then?
I'll make a motion. Um, I will, will appoint, um, can I do both at the same time?
Sure.
So appoint Julia Giganti Almira and Paul Wendelgass, both to the Conservation Commission.
Second that. All right. So motion made by Vice Chair Butt, seconded by Councillor Santos. All in favor? I'm sorry, any discussion? Any discussion? I jumped the gun. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we're finally, looks like, have some interest for the middle school position at the, for the youth council, which is really great to see. Um, do I have a nomination, Councillor Chines?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Maria Estrada for the open middle school position for the youth council. I just would say, I, uh, actually have known Marie since she was in preschool. Uh, she, uh, was in preschool at Canterbury with my son and know her and her family well. And, uh, really is just a, an incredibly thoughtful and, and, and kind young woman, and I think would be a great addition to the youth council.
Wonderful. Wait a second.
Second that.
All right. So, motion to appoint Maria, Maria Estrada to the youth council made by Councillor Chines, seconded by Councillor Santos. Any additional discussion? No? All in favor? So, Bill, you're sticking with us here. Um, item number nine, we are revisiting the, um, the fleet policy. We, we brought this up sometime during the summer. Um, and there was some really good feedback on it. So we went back and we looked at it again. And I'm, I want to actually pass it over to Mr. Renaud to give an overview.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, so second version of the fleet policy, uh, basically is following the state guidance. So no bells and whistles. Uh, really what I would say is the stripped down version to meet the criteria for green communities. Um, just again, for the background, this is one of five criteria that need to be met to be designated as a green community. Uh, solar generation zoning, um, expedited permitting for solar generation, um, siting, uh, energy reduction plan, we're getting a twenty-year reduc-, uh, twenty percent reduction, um, within a certain time period, the fuel efficient policy that we're talking about tonight, and then the stretch code adoption. Um, basically the quick gist of it is that, um, replacement of vehicles will have to meet, um, the green community program guidance for minimum miles per gallon. Um, and there's criteria within the state, um, regulations that tell us based on the type of, of vehicle it is, two-wheel drive, four-wheel drive, different miles per gallon that have to be met. Um, there's exemptions for heavy duty vehicles. So that's a lot of the equipment that Public Works has that would be, would probably be considered more off-road than on-road type vehicles, um, as well as it's based on essentially the size of the vehicle. Uh, we also have to include a replacement plan, um, that's done as part of our capital improvement plan. So that's been included in the policy. And then last but not least, we also have to have an inventory that's included within our annual reporting, um, to the folks, um, for the green community folks at the state. So, um, the inventory plan, at least a draft of it, was included within this draft policy. Um, in that you had about a hundred and sixteen vehicles, as you heard from, um, Ms. Delavope earlier, um, seventeen of those would be eligible to this program. Um, I will note that that's not a comprehensive list that you have. That was basically where I was by the time I had to submit. So you'll have a little bit more from, uh, I think we're waiting on a few vehicles from the school and a few vehicles from, um, the light plant. But as soon as we have those, we will be good to go. So, um, that's basically the program in a nutshell, or the fleet policy in a nutshell. And, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. And I'll just, I'll just add that, um, I know that one of the earlier versions we looked at had a lot more things in it, including idling, which is a state policy and we should be following. Um, but, but I think the important thing for Wakefield is to get this, get this kind of on the books. And then as we become a green community, we're going to learn a lot from our peers and we can always go back and make this more stringent. I mean, nothing would make me happier than more stringent, but I think at this point we want to become a green community, um, and, and then see kind of what we can learn, what grants we can get and how we can continue. This is a continuous improvement project. So, um, any comments? Questions?
Councillor Chines? Thank you. No, no comment on the policy itself in support of it, just a, maybe a request in the future for the inventory. We could also include the department and the use of the vehicle. I mean, for some of them, it was self-explanatory, but, you know, for some of the other vehicles, I think it was just, you know, I think it'd be helpful at least for us from a, you know, just an understand, understanding perspective to know exactly where sort of all the vehicles are, are, are sitting. But, uh, again, no concerns about the policy and that certainly isn't a, a short-term request by any stretch of the imagination.
And, and this will, this, once we pass the policy, the school committee will review the same policy and will be asked to pass it. And I don't believe that the light department is required to pass it, but they have indicated that they would like to look at it and will consider doing so. So I, I know that they, um, have been, uh, encouraging on, on this. So, um, Councillor Tendrowski?
I, I guess maybe it's better directed to you, Mr. Renaud. Um, I'm, I'm having just trouble understanding the, the miles per gallon requirements here because it, it looks to be almost like a formula that's, that's included under definitions. But in practical terms, you know, what are we talking about here? What sorts of vehicles are going to be required to meet this? Are we, is this saying that basically you have to have an electric vehicle in order to be able to meet these requirements? Or like, just distill it down, what's it mean?
Hy- hybrid, I would say. It's, it's more of a hybrid than, than full electric. So to give you an idea, two-wheel drive car would be thirty miles per gallon, um, four-wheel drive cars, twenty-nine, uh, sport utility vehicle, uh, two-wheel drive is going to be twenty-four, four-wheel drive is twenty-one. So it's not very super stringent, um, but if you look at the numbers of what we have in the inventory currently, um, you know, the next time those are up for replacement, we would get, you know, one of these, um, either a hybrid vehicle or something else that, that meets that requirement.
And what do we know as far as, um, cost comparisons relative to those, you know, um, hybrid versus non? Because I understand that it, it's focused on reducing fuel consumption and energy costs, it says, you know, but from a, like a straight out cost perspective, you know, it, what's the differential there?
You're looking, usually it's around like an eight-year buyback at that point for what the additional cost is in the, in the fuel savings. That's, that's typically been the rule of thumb that, that I've read. So, um, you know, whether that changes down the road as more of these become available, um, you know, again, you probably throw all of that out right now with the issues with the chips and how all that's going on. So, you know, it, it's, it's kind of tough to give you an apples-to-apples comparison right now. But, um, that's about the rule of thumb, it was about eight years.
And what, what has been our, our history of maintaining vehicles? I don't know, Bill or, or Mr. Mayo.
I'm not following.
You mean like how long do they last?
In terms of how many, how many years, you know, like do we normally retain a vehicle? Because as I understand you're saying, it's, it's basically a break-even proposition if we hang on to the vehicle for eight years.
Oh, we were definitely hanging on to vehicles for eight years. Most of these are, yeah. So especially the, the ones that are, that are not exempt to the policy. Um, I think, you know, I, I have a vehicle myself that, that I believe that was a, that was in a about a twenty, fifteen-year, twenty-year cycle, somewhere in that range. So, I mean, we have them for a good chunk of time. They don't, they're not a quick turnover, ten-year, five-year thing. We don't do that.
And if we're talking about hybrid, then would that not also include like the infrastructure upgrades we'd have to make across town in order to be plugging in these vehicles?
Hybrids plug in.
Hybrids aren't plug-in, unfortunately. No.
They regenerate when you.
Regenerate as they drop.
They regenerate and.
So there's no.
So there's not, he's not talking plug-in hybrids. He's talking like a Prius kind of hybrid.
Right.
Where, where you just get better gas mileage because when you're coasting and when you're braking, you're regenerating the battery. There's a battery that's capturing that, that power.
Okay, because like it's.
That's like my hybrid. So I have a hybrid and I don't plug it in at all.
I understand, but they're also, but they're also plug-ins too, right?
There are, yeah, they're definitely, and I think more and more there will be plug-ins and there will probably be some infrastructure for that. But we already have, I mean, we have a plug-in at the, um, at the police department, right?
Yeah, we have a number of them.
Yeah, I think there's a number already at the light department.
Well, we, we may add more, but they're, they're.
Even using the three public ones, you could use some of those.
I know, but we, what I'm getting at is, I mean, we're talking about a fleet that's like over a hundred vehicles. And so we have a few of these charging stations right now. It, you know, it, it says that the, the, the intention is to reduce, um, fuel consumption, which I understand. But then it says also reduce energy costs. And that's where I have to hang up, because I'm not, I'm not entirely sure how that, how that is necessarily achieved, especially if we have, if we're trending more towards, you know, plugging in a lot of vehicles.
Well, I mean, energy, right, if you do do a plug-in, electricity is generally cheaper than, than fuel. So you, you, I see, understand what you're saying about the capital cost, but in general, it should be cheaper energy costs. Um, and, you know, there's no oil, so the maintenance on this, no oil, and much less gasoline is where I think they're thinking of the energy savings. You know, and again, there are, when we talk about green communities, there's three hundred and fifty-one communities in Massachusetts. I think like three twenty already are doing this. So I don't think that has been a big cost, um, consideration or seen a big impact.
Yeah. A, a few communities have tried to go with the full electric route. And I think, you know, that, to your, to your point earlier, um, Julie, is that we may consider that down the road.
Yeah.
If that is something that the board wants, or the, the council wants to consider. But, um, this is a very much stripped down from what even some of the more, um, I'd say the, the more advanced communities that have been doing this for the past decade plus. So, um, you know, this is, um, essentially a first step. And all of these are the minimum criterias to be eligible for, for, you know, the, the green community grants that we would be going after too. So I think. So, I think when you weigh all that into it too, and you're able to pick up grants in six-figure ranges, that, you know, that's all part of it as well. So, you, there are capital costs, but there's also savings that we can get to.
And just to tighten up, exemptions should, I think that should just be corrected spelling.
Yeah, there's some corrections in spelling. I've got that.
The heavy duty, that sentence too, because I think it says except, it should be exempt, I believe.
Yeah, it should say exempt. I've got a few.
I don't know how.
You stole my grammar.
So, the bottom line is like.
Do you use a red pen?
This is in essence, because of our status as a green community, this is in essence a requirement.
To refer to apply to become a green community. We have to have this complete, and we're hoping to have our application in by the end of the year. So, really, this is the last piece that we have to.
And the energy reduction plan.
And we have an energy reduction plan.
Will be in front of this board next meeting, initial.
Which we've been working really hard on, which includes this. Vehicles are part of that energy reduction plan. So, this helps us get there as well.
These are the minimum requirements to be within this, within a fuel efficiency vehicle policy. This is the minimum that we have to include.
Yeah, we're not going to win any awards for this policy.
I guess I just, I'm always just.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to be mindful of, you know, the unanticipated cost being with this. You know, and so there are a lot of things I think we need to be thinking about holistically, especially where we see this, you know, headed going forward and what that would mean. I think that that's an important consideration for all of us.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I think at this point, these are really more traditional hybrid, like Prius's cars, where are still using gasoline, but less of it because they have the battery capacity to get better gas mileage.
F-150s and things of that nature are, they're exempt? Is that correct? Like, or F-250s or?
They're in. F-150s are in. But, F-150s, I believe, are in. Yeah, they're not exempt. And.
The 250s are.
Right, 250s are, but then, with the way the sizing of the vehicles are, I believe your Explorers are exempt. Yeah, so your Explorers would be exempt.
And all of these, we have alternate, hybrid alternatives?
Yes.
For each and every one of these we're talking about. So, we're not changing the vehicle to a bunch of Priuses, I guess, if I'm getting it right.
Yeah, no, 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 you should be able to get these, I mean, to Bill's point, right now the market is a little crazy. But within the next 10 years, every single manufacturer is supposed to have hybrid options.
Right, so the policy basically. Yeah, the policy is exempting any vehicle that doesn't have that. So, police crews is, for example, there's not any exempt, there's not an, you know, a fuel-efficient version of it. So, when that comes upon and that's available, then we would start to migrate that into the capital plan. So, that's kind of the thought process. So, if there isn't a vehicle available, it's not included within this policy.
Right. Thanks.
Good questions. Somebody else? All right. So, do I have a motion?
I move that we accept the fleet policy.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Santos, seconded by Vice Chair. But any additional discussion on the fleet policy? No? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll both? So, we're going to pass this six to zero.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you so much, Bill. It was a long evening for you. Thanks for all your insight. Item number 10. We have a one-day liquor license for the Hartshorn House Beer Tasting Event on November 13th, 2021, one of my personal all-time favorite events. Less for the beer and more for the, now that they do it online, it was great cheese and charcuterie tray thing, which is fabulous. So, do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Santos, seconded by Vice Chair. But any additional discussion on that?
Just sending people to the Hartshorn House website.
What is the website? What is the website? Google Hartshorn House.
Right. Right, Google Hartshorn House. And on the website, you can sign up for it. They'll send you a link to zoom in, to enjoy the Brewmaster, the charcuterie plate.
It's great.
HartshornHouse.org. HartshornHouse.org. So, November 13th. Sign up by then.
Yep.
Or before then.
Great.
And you can purchase those tickets by PayPal or Venmo.
Great.
So.
Yeah, this has been a good event for them because it used to be they would have to run two shifts and then it would sell out. And now that it's, this is one of those one that's being online really is. And they give some great history in between, so. Okay, so we do still have to vote. Everyone in favor of providing the Hartshorn House a one-day liquor license on November 13th, 2021? All in favor? Opposed? Repose, six to zero. Okay. Mr. Mayo, you can give an overview of town meeting.
Sure. We discussed this a little bit at the tri-board meeting, but I thought we could maybe go through this quickly again if there were any questions. November town meeting, there are nine warrant articles. Kicks off at 8:00 in the morning on Saturday, November 6th, at the field house, which is behind the high school here on Farm Street. There will be indoor and outdoor seating. There will be outdoor check-in. Masks will be required inside the field house. You're welcome to wear a mask outside, but there is no mask requirement outside, as you all know. Speakers will most likely remove their masks when they speak because people have trouble understanding, and we want to make sure they understand. We've done that at the meetings before. So, I think it's a fairly benign town meeting. You know, first article is the town report for fiscal year 2021, how we ended it up. And we ended up that very well, better than we anticipated as we fought going into it. And as we mentioned the other night, department heads did a great job in returning about 1.4 million to the town that helped us with our free cash numbers. And there were amounts encumbered for projects going into this fiscal year. Most of those encumbrances, and I'll talk about them Monday night, are projects that just couldn't get filled, couldn't get completed. So, they've already been approved. Money's already there, so it'll get approved next fiscal year. In the school department, Doug Lyons will be prepared to speak on any school department encumbrances. One that I really like is that snow and ice, we did not go over. We returned 44,000 to the town, which is nice. And we've been moving that account up over the years. I think when 50% of this board was on the finance committee, I think we were way down around 300,000 a year when we started, so.
Or below that.
We moved that or below, 293, I think. So, we moved that forward. So, that's always a fun report to go through. And this report is on the town website, so it's been there for a while. So, people can see each department, how they, how they did that. Article two will be to balance our budget for fiscal year '22. We're going to recommend using 2.5 million in free cash. And we talked about that a little bit at the tri-board meeting. And I'll of course talk about that at town meeting. And that is really because we use very conservative revenue figures in going to the Mass Department of Revenue to make sure that they'll approve our tax rate. I do think you're going to see us really ratchet up those other monies in the town, particularly other receipts, getting back to the pre-pandemic level. Next year, I'll move up another 10% to where we were before to get to the pre-pandemic level. I can't, we couldn't jump that 20% that would raise eyebrows with the DOR. So, we all know what we've been doing there. Item number three, public safety building, will be a borrowing. Public, the permanent building committee will talk about that. It's 2.5 million, and it is basically 100% because of the increase in costs due to the delays for a varied amount of reasons. So, they'll be talking about that. Vocational school, which is no money that we are approving right now. It is approving the project. There's no money appropriated, I should say, right now. We're approving the project as a community. We've talked about that at a meeting here. This board was gracious enough at that time to support the project and also supported the drafting of a letter that went into the state to request that 100 million of ARPA funds be used for the vocational school. I'm happy to report that we think on this recent kind of budget supplement that just came out, it looks like we're a third of the way there. Looks like 33 million was earmarked, trying to figure that out through. So, I think we're a third of the way there. I think we could do another lobbying for the rest of it. But that's a real game changer for all the communities here in that. But that's an important project, I think, for the entire community and the entire area. Library has two articles. One, unfortunately, we couldn't get their contract done in time for the spring town meeting. But it's all done now. It's very similar to the other contracts, so the library union will be all set. That is a $30,000 line item, free cash. And I know that many of you are very, Article six, are very interested in the Sunday hours. And that Article six brings back the Sunday hours. That was not in the original budget, not knowing what was going to happen with the pandemic. But I think now we're ready to bring that back. And again, if for some reason we do not have Sunday hours at the library, for some reason if there's a thing, then it just goes back to the general fund. Let's hope that doesn't happen, but it is, you know, always a possibility. The last monetary article is Article seven, which talks about basically the Broadway crossing in the Broadway area. We've talked about that. We have an earmark in, I hate the word earmark, but I love the word, I love when we get them, from the federal government for the quad gates at Broadway. But I think there's a little bit more work we want to do there. We want to make sure the sidewalks are better and that whole streetscapes are better. I think that that neighborhood really deserves it. This is outside of what National Grid will be doing because of certain areas the National Grid had nothing to do with. That should be enhanced too. And I think some of those sidewalks on Broadway, you can still see some brass plaques in there if you look closely, that were there during the Roosevelt administration. Not Teddy, but Franklin, when they were actually built after, during the Depression. So, that's kind of cool. If you go, you can go down and see them somewhere. So, that's 400,000 to supplement any money we might need with the gates and to complete that project. That would also be free cash. So, all in and on the monetary articles, I'm very comfortable with them, right? We should still, we're going to be around, you know, 4.5, 5 million in free cash that I know is going to again increase as money comes in this year. So, finance committee has, will hear these again Thursday night, but the forecasting committee is very comfortable with it. Last two articles are non-monetary. Article eight has to do with renaming the Commission on Disability Issues. So, there will be a Commission on Disabilities instead of how it's named now. It's a change in the general bylaw that was requested by the Commission on Disability Issues right now. And Article nine is a zoning change, a citizen petition that I believe the planning board will actually be hearing tomorrow night, maybe, to make a recommendation on that. And that has to do with building near the, nearing, near an open stream. So, just wanted to give a quick, we can never talk about town meeting too much, so it's another way for the citizens to see this. But the warrant's been out, it's been posted, it's online. We look forward to having you at town meeting. We will be making accommodations for people that maybe can't hear or what have you. And we'll be putting that all together on Friday afternoon, before town meeting, with WCAT, which does a great job on it. So, I don't know if there's any questions on this. I just wanted to give a brief overview on this.
Any questions? Okay, we'll be there. Item 12, announcements. Do you have any announcements? Impossible. Councilor Tombruski?
All right, I've got a few. But quickly, the dedication of the Peter J. May Memorial Dog Park will be on Saturday, November 13th, at 2:00 PM, with a rain date of Sunday, the 14th, at the same time. It's shaping up to be a really, really great, you know, event and a great way to honor Peter. So, please, please attend if you can. There is, there will be a program, it will be announced in the coming days, to help the businesses that were most directly impacted by the Broadway closure. So, I'm excited about that. So, just kind of stay tuned for that in the coming days. I think it'll be a great opportunity to see those businesses rebound and be even stronger once the crossing opens. On a personal note, I am actually running the New York City Marathon a week from Sunday for Home Base, which is a tremendous program through Mass General Hospital that supports veterans and families of veterans and Gold Star families. They address the hidden wounds of war. So, there's a lot of mental health services and programs available to help our returning veterans and their families. So, if you're interested in supporting that endeavor, you can jump on my Facebook page and check that out. I encourage you to do so. And finally, I'm wearing a pink tie tonight because it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. As a guy, it's weird to say. You mammograms save lives, but they do. So, I'm sure many of us have been touched. I know in my own family, it's impacted. So, I'd encourage everyone, you know, to be aware of that. And, you know, I encourage all women to make sure that you're taking care of your health in that way and not to neglect, you know, something so important that can really make all the difference between life and death. So, with that, I think I've covered it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Councilor Tines?
Thank you. A few updates today to share. One on the high school project. So, folks may have seen in the last couple of days, the school building committee is kicking off an educational visioning process. This will be a series of four workshops that are really designed to identify both sort of the future educational goals for the school, but also sort of the priorities that we want to see in terms of educational programming to help inform the design that ultimately comes together. Those forums kick off this Wednesday, Wednesday, October 27th. And then the following, or a few of the following Tuesdays, November 2nd, November 16th, and November 30th, 6:30 to 9:00 o'clock each day. So, certainly a big time commitment, but for folks that are interested in that and really having a voice in terms of the educational program that'll inform the high school, great opportunity to get involved. Wanted to pass along congratulations to the Wakefield Police Department. So, thanks to our legislative delegation, Representative Garabedian and Representative Wong. They received a citation from the Mass House of Representatives, recognizing really the bravery and just the absolutely indispensable contribution they made during the Rise of the Moors standoff in July. And so, really well-deserved recognition. I believe they had food too as part of that, thanks to Representative Wong and his side business. But certainly well-deserved and great recognition for the contributions there. I did want to mention, I had the opportunity this weekend to pop into the Albion Culture Exchange to go to the Square Works exhibit. And if folks haven't seen that yet, it really encourage you to do so. It was a great exhibit. I believe it's closing next Saturday, so you've got two more days to see it, Thursday and Saturday. But not only was the exhibit great, but I also wanted to highlight it. And I know, you know, Mr. Mayo, you mentioned this in the, your town administrator update this past weekend. You know, we've made some really great strides in that building. You know, we've talked about the bathrooms, I think, at length over the last couple of years. But, you know, they've also replaced the flooring, which looks absolutely beautiful. They've done painting, they've done new lighting. It really, compared to what it was a few years ago, it's amazing when you go in there. I mean, it really does look like a professional art gallery and certainly is a worthy showplace for the art that we're exhibiting there. So, really excited to be there and just encourage folks to check that out. And then finally, just wanted to mention that I am having office hours tomorrow from 5:30 to 7:00 theoretically at the Library Plaza, though I suspect I will be inside in the reference area. So, please stop by and say hello if you have a chance.
I was lucky enough to be at the ceremony with the representatives and Chief Scory and his men and women, based on the situation between the Rise of the Moors. And it was just such a lovely tribute to how professional our officers acted that day and in the training that they have and how they helped to de-escalate a situation that really could have gone sideways very quickly. And I was most, you know, I also took note of that some of these, some of the, one of the officers was actually on, he's a rookie. They look 14. I mean, they look so young, the young officers. And the amount of grace and poise that they showed with the mentoring of our older officers just is such a tribute to our department as a whole. I also want to bring up a good friend of mine who is traveling up to Maine and they're in law enforcement, sent me a picture. The Wakefield Fire Department has had two ladders overhead on one of the overpasses for Lieutenant Ford as a tribute to Lieutenant Ford. And it was really beautiful, and she sent me a picture of it. And she said it was just, and they're from Nantucket, they're not from Wakefield, but she said the pride clearly that the community showed and the love for Lieutenant Ford was so obvious. So, that was lovely.
Just, I just want to reiterate some things. We all kind of mentioned the tri-board and housing forum. And I just wanted to, through you, Steve, just thank your teams for putting those together. fine, but were great, uh, residents who spoke and kind of shared of who's looking for housing in our town. And then I just, um, I know it ran late and so we didn't get a lot of conversation with the tri-board, but that was just, you know, really exciting to have the $8 million from ARPA coming, really looking forward to those conversations. And something that Superintendent Lyons said, which I really want to look into is, he talked about all the students entering the school system who are speaking, um, other languages and those students come with families. And so, you know, I know we stopped Wakefield 101 because of pandemic. I'm hoping January, maybe with MLK Day, we can kind of do a joint, but kind of learn about those, those families that are moving and speaking different languages. Um, and one thing that Erin said also, uh, to tie on that is, we did get new census data 2020, um, and I would love to kind of do a deeper dive about those numbers. I know our population went up to 27,000, but you know, who is it that's living in town? And I, I would love maybe a presentation of that because I think there's just so much helpful data there as we kind of talk about programming and, and how to spend money and how to, you know, what to budget correctly. So just some ideas. I guess that maybe comes into future meetings, but would love feedback on that.
That's great.
Yeah, you will probably have to look at things like translation and services and.
Yeah, you know, um, Counselor Chines has talked about, um, going to an event at the Galvin Middle School and it was translated in English and Portuguese, Spanish and Portuguese.
Spanish and Portuguese, yeah.
And so that's probably the languages coming in, but just to get more specifics and, yeah, I, I, it's exciting. Um, but you know, I don't know if we have a lot of Spanish translations on any of our services, so something just to think about.
That's gonna double the size of that 2030 report.
Still gonna be two-sided.
And recycled paper.
No, that's great. Um, Jonathan, do you have something to add?
No, I, I just wanted to mention the, um, that the Galvin Back to School Night, the fact that they had Spanish and Portuguese translation live on the Zoom meeting was something that I, I was really impressed with. And I, and I think it does speak to the fact that, you know, this is the, the reality of, of where we are and something that I, I, I think we've got to think about more broadly as a community. Um, how do we make ourselves accessible to our residents, knowing that, um, you know, a, a good portion of our residents are not going to be comfortable necessarily in English as their first language? And so, um, you know, it's incumbent upon, you know, the schools, and I think they take this really seriously, but also us as, as the town to, uh, to respond to that and to adapt, uh, in the same way.
All right. So I'll just add that, um, yesterday's event, which I'm not quite sure what we officially called it, but it was the Touch a Truck Idle Hands Trick or Treating NGO Music Festival. Um, it was great. It was compact, it was very well-attended. Uh, half the kids in town were dressed as soccer players because I think they were coming off the soccer field into the trick-or-treating. Um, but it was really a great event and, you know, hats off to your team to, I mean, I saw Jennifer and Erin running around and I'm sure there were other people as well. So thanks so much for doing that.